This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers. We are going to call to order our second night of interviews for superintendent finalist candidates at East Hampton Public Schools. We are here to roll the call in tonight, Megan.
Megan Harvey here.
Eric?
Here.
Laura Scott present. Sam?
Sam Hunter present.
Ben?
Ben Herser.
Linda?
Linda Markey here.
Thank you, so thanks for joining us, everyone. We are here tonight with Mary Jane Rickson, who is our second of three interviewees. We've let Mary Jane know ahead of time, we've offered her five minutes for an introductory statement. We will then have seven questions that we have shared with all candidates ahead of time. Each of the questions will be moderated by a different member of the committee. We do encourage follow-up and any requests for specification. Whomever is moderating that question can just call on those who have their hands raised if they'd like to ask a follow-up question or for further clarification. And we're ready to begin with Mary Jane's introductory statement. Thank you, Mary Jane.
Thank you. I just want to thank you all for inviting me back, I really appreciate that. I enjoyed my day here with the students and staff. It was a very enlightening day. The students really did a nice job asking me very probing questions, they had some things that they wanted to know. So they were really helpful and they did a nice job trying to navigate questions to support what they're looking for. So they were very thoughtful. I met with the admin team today and got a little tour of the building, so it was a really, really nice day. I was really excited to come here to talk to you today because the students really emulated the three tenants that you talk about: kindness, equity, and inclusion. So they really were thoughtful with those questions, and those questions really evoked a lot of meaning to me. So I was really glad that they were able to support those tenants of what we believe in East Hampton to what you're putting forward here. And I look forward to continuing this conversation with you for the next 85 minutes.
Thank you so much. We're going to begin with question one from our member Eric Gaiet.
Hi, Ms. Rickson, Mary, what would you...
Mary Jane's bio, or Ms. Rickson, whatever you like.
Okay, so Mary Jane, I'm Eric Gaiet. My leading question to start off is, now that you've been around our district for a while and investigating, and I'm sure, what would you describe as our greatest assets and strengths? And what would you say are our greatest challenges as a district and individually as smaller schools?
Sure. I was really, first of all, your greatest asset is your staff. I think that is by far the greatest asset of any district. I have to say, I was really impressed with the buildings. The buildings are gorgeous and beautiful, so I just want to put that out there, and they're very well-maintained. As far as working with, breaking the information down, I want to let you know that I really appreciated how you focus on the Mountain View School and how it's three schools within one school. I really liked that breakdown, I thought that was a unique way to address each specific area of grade level. The pre-K, I'd like to start with them, I was really interested in finding out how that worked as far as separating four-year-olds with three-year-olds. So I thought that was interesting that you're able to transition the four-year-olds ready for kindergarten to a full-day program. So it's really interesting that you had the two half-day programs for the three-year-olds to get them out of the home and really do more of early literacy to help your early interventions. And then when they got to four-year-olds, make them the full-time, so that they emulate the kindergarten. So that transition was really great. What I really thought was clever is that you have your early childhood program supporting the tiny tot program, the two-to-five-year-olds. So I really thought that was a unique way to help the students find what they're looking for at the high school as far as career and college readiness, if that's something they're interested, while serving the community. So I really thought that was a tremendous strength. So it was, I was very impressed with that. As far as challenges, we're seeing a lot of students come in with the early childhood and early intervention with a lot of socio-emotional supports that they're needing. So really taking time to make sure that we can help our students be successful by finding the right services for them. So some of the challenges we have with a lot of these programs is finding the support staff and the academic teachers to support the students that have been identified with early interventions. So those are challenges, not only here in East Hampton, but other districts as well. So I think that is something that we're all going to be aware of in the next few years. Now, going on to grades three through five, I thought that when I looked around and met with the principal there and some of the students, they felt really secure and safe and nurtured in their environment, and that is a testament to the work that you're doing within your DEI work. So the students really felt that they were supported and that they had what they needed. They were very excited to be part of this conversation when I met with them today. They felt that they were part of a community. So, and they also didn't feel like they were broken down into three different schools. They knew they were part of one school, but they had a part, they owned a part of it themselves. So that was really an interesting component when I met with them. And I think some of the challenges with the three-to-five-year-olds, this is when we start the standardized testing with the students. So it's really difficult for teachers to not overwhelm the students with some of this testing. We want to make sure that the students get the support they need and learn the standards in the curriculum, but not overwhelming them by testing, because once they hit grade three, we start to test them standardized testing. So we can't take away their holistic education by focusing too much on the test. So I think we have to really try to balance that work with the students in grades three through five, because this is when we're starting to look at our data. What are we doing to support them and finding that information? Grades six through eight, great resource for transition. I found that they were doing a good job transitioning from the elementary into the middle school by even how you separate the times. The high school, I mean, the preschool comes in at nine, the three through five comes in at eight-thirty-five, and the middle schoolers come in at eight-ten. So really getting them ready for the next stage of the transition was an important component when I met with the students. The challenges with grades six through eight, I think, really is we have a lot of students with, again, some of that socio-emotional support, and they start getting nervous and anxiety and really trying to find ways to support their socio-emotional well-being at that point. Transitioning to a new school is also something that is difficult for a lot of families, and moving to a big school is a lot different, but I do think they've done a really good job. Dr. Pasquini did a really nice job helping the students transition, so I really liked that. And as far as grades nine through twelve, I was very, very impressed with what I saw here with the students. In the program of studies, I really was impressed that you had all kinds of offerings for the students: anime, graphic arts, that you're able to put in some science and robotics, having the opportunity to continue with arts and sciences across the district, to be honest with you. It's really nice to see that there's a real support from the community to support the arts and the music with the students. I think oftentimes, because budgetary constraints, you know, look for cuts, cutting in those areas tends to be a priority. I'm so glad that we haven't done that here, because those types of programs are really important to the students. It's important that we keep them motivated, make them engaged, make sure that we find things that they want to do, have them to get the passions they have. And between grades six to twelve is when we have to make sure the students stay engaged and having those programs to support them with the clubs and the after-school activities. And when I met with the middle schoolers today, a couple of them, they were interested in a pottery club, which is now going to be starting, so they're very excited about that. I guess there was a kiln in the grades three through five, and they wanted one on their side, so they're going to be opening that up for them as well. So having them be interested in school, we want to make sure kids, students stay in school, and we all know that by, you know, when they get to grade nine is when they become disengaged. So that big area between grade seven and now, we have to find those interests. So when I looked at the program of studies and talking to the students, they were very pleased with what they had to offer. There was something for everybody. And one of the questions I did ask the students was, is there something for everybody? And almost every single one in that group that I talked to today said yes, they believe there's things for everybody. If you're an athlete, there's things, if you're not an athlete, there's the clubs after school, there is a lot. I had several band people with me today, and so they're going to be here tonight practicing and having their big show. So I have to say, it was very great meeting them today. And again, I think some of the challenges will be supporting the students budgetarily, because I know that's going to be an issue for all of us moving forward. We want to maintain those same programs for the students, and what can we do to keep the level services? But I also think we need to expand some of the programs, really offering some programs for more career readiness for them and college readiness. What does that look like? What are our programs look like? We have the AP offerings, we have dual enrollment, we have things like that. But what else can we do to make sure that they're getting what they need once they leave here with their work-based learning plans? How does that look? What kind of programs do we need to offer them to make them be engaged in what's happening in the community? After all, these are our students, we're going to come back here from college and work here, and they're going to be part of the process. So we need to make sure that we continue to support what they do and what their interests are. I say this all the time, we don't know what the jobs are going to look like or what their careers are going to look like in, you know, ten, fifteen years, even five years. We can say, who knew that there was a job as an influencer? Who knew that was going to be a profession? So, you know, so, you know, that's, we have to prepare them for this. So we need to really make sure that we teach our students how to be better thinkers and, you know, what can we do to support that in our journey to be educators? So again, I think the district is doing a really good job. I think resource allocation is going to be something that we have to continue to have challenges with, but I think your best resource is the staff, that is the number-one resource. They're a dedicated group. They, I was really impressed that all of your administrators have been here long-term, there's not a big turnover, so that's a testament to the district. Many districts I've been into, there's a revolving door with administration. That is not the case, especially here. All your administrators are veterans and they have a vested interest in what's happening here, so that is good. And it's the staff as well. So that was my day, so I think a lot of the information I got today was from the students and the staff and finding out what works and what doesn't work. But I think generally, this district is doing a great job, and some of the challenges will have to be, how can we expand the programs and what can we do to support that?
Thank you. Does anyone have a follow-up question?
I don't have a follow-up, I just have a note. I'm having a little bit difficulty hearing you, you're a soft speaker, that's all.
Oh, okay.
That's all. That's more my ears than your voice.
Okay. So I would have a follow-up of just, you definitely mentioned the arts and the extra programs, which, so I would ask, how would you keep programs that we might look at as above and beyond, the arts and the clubs that are offered when budgetary constraints are in place? Because a lot of people in the community don't look at them as extra, above and beyond, but they look at, we need to have these programs. So what kind of clever ways to manipulate the budget in ways that we can keep what we already have, the general curriculum, but also keep those programs and even look into adding programs when maybe the money's not there?
That is the age-old question. I think really finding support from your community is important. We have businesses out there, we have experts in the field in our particular area. This area has a lot of arts and culture embedded within the community, so really using those people as a resource to help us perhaps fund or maybe volunteer to help, you know, to help some of those programs, bringing people in from the outside to support the students is important. I really choose not to cut those programs, because, again, with education, you need to use all parts of your brain, and I think those music and those arts programs really help stimulate the brain and having those programs, you know, some may think they're extra, but I do think it helps with development. So using the resources that you have in the area, you have places like North Hampton, East Hampton, you have music studios, and you have the cultural center, lots of places that you can use for a resource. But again, people, you know, if you're going to talk to people, you have to build those relationships. So in order to do that, I have to get out there to have conversations with folks, you know, what can we do to support our students? Because ultimately, this is what we're here for. So I think finding grant opportunities, a lot of the grant opportunities now are for STEM, you know, music and arts are not so much a grant as far as the government, but there are local grants to support, things like that, Cultural Council and things like that that we could use. But those are not sustainable, so you have to look for some sustainable ways to support those programs. And that would be, you know, as a group, we'd probably get our music association together and see, you know, what can we do to support and how can we make sure that our students are continuing to get the services they need. And sometimes you might have to, you know, have a music teacher, do band and a couple of other things. Teachers are wearing many, many hats now, so in order to do the programs, you have to have, you know, maybe the chorus teacher does a different music class, or sometimes you have to share services with other towns, and that's also a way to do that, because there are towns who, you know, want to keep those programs but can't afford to keep them, so maybe they want them a quarter of the time and we can pay, you know, split those services as well without shortchanging the students. So those are a couple of ideas.
Thank you.
For sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, that was great. We'll move on to question two. Please discuss how you approach and deal with conflict in the various arenas of school management, for example, administration, staff, students, and families. How do you define positive culture in a school community and how do you build and support that? And just as a programming note I should have mentioned, you all have a timer running, I'll just give you three fingers when we're at three minutes left, just so you all have a sense of where we're at. Again, don't feel the need to fill all 10 minutes, us Lab Mounds are happy to ask you further questions, so go right ahead.
I will do that. As someone who spent some time as a mediation coordinator and had some experience with conflict resolution, I think I have the skills to support people that are having conflicts. In any place you work, conflict is inevitable, but we have to understand that conflict is not necessarily a bad thing. Conflict is something that we need to work through. Every person has different life experiences, different opinions, and different ways that they've evolved based on what they've learned. So I think we have to take that into account when conflicts arise. So it's important, as a leader and a district leader and educator, we have to really talk to our folks, collaborate, let's see, you know, let's get to the root of the problem. You know, why are we here? What are we here to do? Well, our job is to support the students and support our mission. So what is the conflict about? Is it a personality conflict? Is it, you know, like what the curriculum looks like? Is it a scheduling issue? You know, let's take a look and have those conversations. I expect to have some conversations with my admin team, and I have, and we always don't agree on everything, but we do talk it through, and let's see, you know, what we can do to support each other. I am a solutions-based person, so if you have any conflict and you have a different idea, I'm certainly open to it, but you can't do that without having discussion. The last thing you want is to have resentment within your team. Having a crack in your administration doesn't help support the mission of the school. So really keeping those lines of communication open, tell them it's okay to have conflict, let's talk about it, what can we do to support each other, and come up with a solution together. So I think when we have these discussions, we just need to lay the groundwork. We're here to come up with a solution, let's see how we can work together and support it. Now, once you come up with a solution, everybody may not always be happy, but we have to make sure that we leave the room with common sense of what is, what we're going to do moving forward. So that being said, once we come up with that solution, you have to follow up with your folks and say, you know, are you okay? I know that it really wasn't the outcome you expected, but, you know, let's see how we can work together so that, I hear you next time, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate what you do here, but we need to follow up and really, you know, understand why we're here and what can I do to support you in the future? Just because maybe this isn't exactly what you wanted this time, perhaps next time it will be. So really follow up with them, let them know that you value what they have to say, because none of us are experts in what we do. We rely on each other to work together, we're collaborative. So it's really critical that we take that opportunity to work together to do that. And second of all, when we come up with a solution, it's important that we follow through, because there's nothing worse than coming up with a solution, checking with your folks, and then letting it not go to, you know, what you decided as a group. So making sure that you do that, that is important, because if you don't, you're going to really sink some of the morale. So as far as administration, that is what I do, and I approach it honestly the same way with staff. But staff may approach it in a different way, because there are also maybe conflicts with personality, or somebody doesn't like, you know, what they're teaching this year, or they taught it differently before. So those are things that arise. So having those conversations with the principals and saying, how can we support your staff? Let's get to the root of the problem, how can we solve it? And then what we solve it? Gee, is that something we need to do for PD? Is it something we have to support through PD with the staff? Is it somehow further mediation? You know, what do we need to do? Is there an issue with, they don't understand what we're doing with ST math right now? Or do I need to bring somebody in to help you? So really, with the staff, it's one thing. Very similar, the follow-up with the staff when it's done, how can I, what can I do to support you? We value, again, what you say. These are important conversations, because everybody, as I said, has an expertise and has different life experiences, so that's incredibly important. And again, being accountable and holding folks accountable to what they say they're going to do is important. Students is really where I did a lot of my work, so not that I would do that at this level, but I could, if necessary. If the students, one of the students asked me today if they had a conflict, could they come to me? I said, absolutely, my door's always open, and I will be in the building daily, I told them. So, you know, we can have lunch together and do those types of things. So I did let them know that I'm here for them, for sure. But they're going to have conflicts with each other and perhaps with their teachers, perhaps with their principals, but that's what I'm here to listen to, what they have to say. And, you know, it's important for the students to have their own sense of advocacy, you know, I'm really a firm believer in student advocacy, and they need to be able to stand up for themselves and respect what they, you know, we need to respect what they say. We may not always, again, agree with what they say, they may not always agree with what we do, but we need to explain why we're doing things and let them know that they're part of the process and we value them. So when you do that with students, you also need to follow through, and at some point you may say, listen, this may be something for the students to look at themselves for, you know, do I need to look at myself and have some supports on my own? Does it call for restorative justice if there was a conflict with other students? You know, what does that look like as far as that happens? So really, those are the three for in district. With families, it's also the same thing. My door's always open, come in and talk to me, let's have some communication. I'll have some forums after school, in the evenings, I have meetings during the day, coffee with the superintendent, I've done it with the principal. Really, I keep my door open and I try to do meetings with parents quarterly in different times of the day, some in the middle of the day, some in the morning, some in the evening, and it's a question-and-answer period. I'm always here to help and support the parents. Defining positive culture to me is where people feel heard, respected, and know that when you tell them something, you're going to follow through, and you trust them. I think trust is extraordinarily important with any relationship. I have to say, I usually build that rapport through visiting classrooms, talking to folks, listening to them. I know my first tour here, if I get, if I was able to serve in the district, I will be spending some time listening, I will have a listening tour, and seeing what people want to do. And building that sense of positive culture doesn't happen overnight, so it takes a little bit of time, you know, at least, you know, a few months, you know, sometimes it takes a full year depending on, you know, what happens. So really, having an inclusive culture, respecting each other, kindness, and really, to me, a positive culture, if you ask the staff to do things as a group, they want to, they want to support the school, support whatever issue that you have, you know, they trust that you're doing the right thing, but you also engage them in the conversation. If you're bringing in a new curriculum, obviously you have to have conversations with them. So, you know, you can't do things without their support. So really understanding what their needs are, understanding what the students' needs are, and keeping those dialogues open. And really, it comes down to trust, respect, communication is really important, sending communications out to families in multiple languages, different ways to do what could be text messaging, phone calls, you have to do multimedia, all those different ways to do that. So positive culture has to come through different angles in different ways. And you need to set your expectations, you know, I like having a communication plan put in place so that parents know when you're going to be getting a phone call, or, you know, I'll get back to you within 24 hours. So a lot of those things need to be set in place, so when you say you're going to do something, it has to happen. So creating a positive culture takes time, but I think it takes patience and it takes a willingness to want to collaborate. And it's not the Mary Jane Rickson Show, it's the East Hampton Public School Show, and we're here to support everybody.
That's wonderful. Would anybody have a follow-up?
I have one. So sometimes we, I think this happens more often now than it, well, maybe, I'm not that old, maybe it doesn't.
It's all right.
One thing that happens from time to time is there will be something that happens between students outside of school, and it really impacts what happens in school. Can you speak a little bit to how you manage that kind of dynamic or that kind of...
Yeah, that can be tricky, because things that happen also do carry on, so we really need to be aware that oftentimes, I'm told by, principals know a lot of stuff ahead of time, and usually we try to, you know, have the students come in, sometimes we have to contact, you know, a lot of, sometimes it's social media stuff. So really trying to be preventive of calling your students in, and hopefully you can, you know, talk to the students when they come in, what happened. You know, you may have to contact the police and see, you know, is it something I need to worry about here? Or, you know, what happened over the weekend? So, you know, you don't want to be too invasive to the families, you know, personally, but you also have to be sure that we have, you know, a thousand other kids we have to be careful of. So really, it's important to have discussions again, and hopefully you have a good relationship with the people that had those issues before, after school, after school, on weekends, at the party, whatever happened. That happens all the time, and I have to say, for the most part, if you get the students in first thing in the morning, usually you can see what happened and figure out what happened. And as a result, I like to be part of those conversations, because we just need to be on, you know, on the same page when it comes to how we're going to support each other. And it may be as simple as, you know, we're all set and talk to the students individually, you certainly don't want to talk to them together if there was a conflict and how we can support them. And sometimes it takes a big investigation, a lot of stuff happens over the weekend, so when they get to school, this is a safe place for them to really feel comfortable talking about it and get rectified. So, because they can't do it at home, sometimes there's not the support you need at home. So sometimes we are the last line of defense for students. You know, we have adjustment counselors here, we have guidance counselors here, we have trusted teachers, you know, we have the diversity room, there's a great person down there who really seems to be well-trusted with the students. And I think having those conversations with the students ahead of time and letting them know that this is a safe place for you, and we're going to help you get through whatever conflicts happened over the weekend, and that's important.
Thank you. Anyone else who's there? Thank you so much, we're going to move on, Linda, question, please.
Okay. You spoke a little bit earlier about community and having community involvement and everything, so describe the methods by which you engage with students, families, and the larger community that you find to be effective and meaningful. What do you aim to achieve through this engagement? How do you ensure equitable reach across the population and employ cultural competency and inclusion?
Okay. Communication to me is key with anything. Establishing relationships is important. I can say that with all 100% certainty that I engage with the students daily. I'm in the classrooms, I'm in the hallways, I'm in the lunchroom. I take the time to visit their student council meetings and listen to their concerns, I attend their sporting events, and I attend all their, you know, those types of things, but those are peripherally. I like to actually have conversations with the students. Right now, in Gramby, I am meeting with the students one-on-one. They're all grad, the seniors are graduating in June, and I don't know a lot of them, so I really try to take the time to get to know them, so when it comes time for me to talk about them, I know what they're about, and having those conversations with them is really, really important to me. And I'm starting to meet with students, you know, all throughout the day for doing that. I do the same thing at the elementary school. I meet, I see them daily, I like to sit on the floor with our little preschoolers and chat with them, so really being part of the community is important to me. Reading them when they come in in the morning and when they leave in the afternoon is really important. What I can do during the day is to be here. The paperwork and some of the other stuff has to happen when school's over, because ultimately I'm here when the kids are here. So they need to see who I am, and they may have that perfectly clear to me today, they want to see me in the building. The students let me know that, that is what they wanted, and I will be here. I'm every day now. I'm fortunate now that my building right now is in the actual high school, so I do see the kids every day, and before that, I always did. So I have to say that that is how I work with the students. Same thing with teachers, I'm in the classrooms, but I don't want them to be threatening, I mean, hey, oh, what are they talking about today? I'll go in there and I'll leave a little sticky note, hey, I really, I really liked that lesson you talked about. Gee, I didn't know that much about frogs, so, you know, things like that, I'll say. So I really try to make sure that I stay part of the conversation across the board, and being in the schools every day is something I aspire to. I say every day, but I'm there at least three times a week, but, you know, I aspire But, you know, I aspire to every day, but you know how things get in the way. But, you know, and I will be making appointments to meet with students. I have a superintendent and a principal. I had little advisory councils, so I would meet with students at lunch. We'd buy pizza, we'd talk about it, you know, the superintendent's roundtable, I called it. You know, and I would have different kids. Sometimes I would bring in same students and oftentimes I say, hey, can you bring, I'd like to hear the 10th grader, the sophomore experience or the freshman experience, what can I do? A lot of times, you wanna bring the freshmen because they're different. They're a little nervous when they first start school. So you really have to make connections with them because they are looking for support. And they may not know who the people are. So really try to find people who can help them is what I look for. And engaging with families is the same thing. You know, participating in what's happening outside, you know, the rag shag parade and the harvest fair and going to the cultural events. I know the flea market's opening again. I love doing flea markets, so I'll be doing that. And having those conversations and being part of those community events is what I look to do. I participate in car washes. I like to wash cars with the kids. So really, just being part of the community at home is really what, is what I talk about. As far as the larger community, when I was in Granby and my other district as well, I can let you know that this particular district I met with Representative Dom and Representative Carey because we need those folks in our, in our communities to help us move forward getting funding. I know Representative Carey is gone and we're gonna have Representative Gomez pretty soon. So working with those folks is a great way for us to procure some funding. Making sure that they can help us at the state house, what we're looking for. So being part of those conversations with them too. Inviting them into the schools, working with the colleges, you know, right next to Mount Holyoke. So, and, you know, and UMass and all the schools that we're next to right now. I like working with those folks. Right now, we're working with you in Granby on an early college program. So East Hampton, Granby, and Hadley, we're all together doing an early college program. So, you know, I talked to the dean over there at the college to support what's happening with our students. So really, engaging in the larger community is something that we need to do to make sure that our students are getting the services they need. What can we do for each other? So finding, not only working with other districts and the community at large, we need to find ways to all work together. So that's what I do for engagement. And I find it to be effective and meaningful because when we need supports, we have each other to lean on. You know, we can't operate in silos. All school districts are struggling with the same, you know, financial burdens and the same staffing burdens. So we really have to find creative ways to work together, to support each other. It's really about supporting our students and staff. So finding ways to do that is really important to me. And I aim to achieve, aim to achieve this, really establishing relationships. So when it comes time to maybe ask for a little bit more, I'm there. And, you know, and they know that I'm gonna advocate for them. I'm not gonna ask for what we don't need. So I really need to establish those relationships because it comes down to people's pocketbooks. And we have to maintain, you know, the fiscal responsibility because we wanna make sure that families aren't overburdened, but we also wanna make sure our students are being taken care of. So really, having those conversations and being open, honest, and transparent is really important to me. Because you never know what you're gonna need, what you're gonna need. And you might find some experts in something, again, as we've talked about some of the other programs. Engaging with, that's where you're gonna find your little gems to help you out. So that works, that worked great. Equitable reach, okay. I was just gonna ask the next part of the question. I think equitable reach comes down to your families. So what do your families need? You know, how can they communicate? Some of them do not have internet and things like that, so that's an issue for some of them. So perhaps we have to provide hotspots for them and find things to help those families get the services they need so they can access some of the digital services we need. But if they, if we can't, you know, phone calls, letters, you know, I can pick up the phone. I pick up phones all the time to talk to parents. You know, sometimes we need to do that. You know, newsletters maybe for certain students have to go in their backpacks. You know, we have to find ways to do that, translate things. We had some conversations today about translation services for our families. You know, what does that look like? You know, what the families want, what's the best way for them? So really trying to reach everybody in the most equitable manner we can, you know, as many ways as we can. Facebook, you know, whatever social media places we have. People love Facebook. So, so that's what he made, I got it.
Sounds like Wu-Tang for everybody now, that's different.
So, you know, you just wanna make sure that you're being part of those conversations. You know, and include those things into your repertoire. Attend some of the cultural nights that are happening in town. You know, talk to your families, what they're looking for. Have an ELL night for some of your L students. You know, we've done that in some of my other districts. I've had nights with, you know, with families so they can come in and feel part of the community. I think some of the L students who will transfer from other countries don't really have a connection to the schools. And having a special night for them is also important. So I think those are some things that I would certainly do.
Thank you. Any follow-up? Do you have follow-ups? Anybody?
That's a great thorough question.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Question four. Sam.
All right. How would you define the purpose of special education? And describe examples of how you ensure that students with disabilities and their families can access the full life of the school in both academic and non-academic contexts?
Students with, special ed students are students who have exceptional abilities. And I like to make sure that we understand that they are part of this culture of the school. They are not, let's go and do an afterthought. They are part of the school. So to me, students with special needs are those that should access high-quality education through equitable and inclusionary means. Taking time to make sure that your classes are balanced. Teachers are content specialists. I love when you have inclusion classes with special ed students in there with teachers who actually know the content. Oftentimes, when special ed students go to classrooms, they're taken out and put in with a special ed teacher. And say, for example, some special ed teachers, I'm just gonna use high school for an example because there tend to be more content-based. But if you go to a special ed teacher and get pulled out for math, those students should, you know, the special ed teacher may not know geometry. So how can you support that student in that geometry if you don't have the content knowledge of that? So I like to have the special ed teacher go into the actual classroom, learn the lesson, and if the student needs support, take them out of the classroom. So all special ed students should be taught by content specialists, in my opinion. And then the support should be given to these special ed students. They should have the same access to high-quality education as everyone else. That being said, when the students are pulled out, oftentimes in some of these, not necessarily East Hampton, this is not the case I've seen in East Hampton, you guys are doing a great job. I have seen students go to special ed classes and because the content specialist doesn't know geometry, they might get a lower-level math. They're not getting 10th grade math. So not only should they be getting the content, they need to get the content at grade level. They may not get the full scope of what's happening, but they need to get those same concepts and those same materials and those same standards. So I am a firm believer in, let's get them age-appropriate materials for who they are. They should access AP classes, dual enrollment classes, work-based learning. They should have the right to do that. And at the elementary level, the same thing. Let's make sure that the special ed teachers are in the classroom. Students should be part of the community. When I walk into a special, when I walk into a third-grade class, I shouldn't see all the special ed students in a corner with the age. They need to be spread out throughout the classroom in groupings. Student groupings are really important to me. You have different levels of students supporting each other. Students supporting each other really has worked. So I think that is one of the greatest challenges. And that causes a lot of anxiety for teachers because that takes a lot of work and a lot of planning. But it's something that we have to train teachers to do better. And I'm a firm believer in that. And I think moving forward, I would love to see students do more inclusionary social things. For example, we have a unified basketball in our town. So the students get to play basketball between the fall season and the winter season. And you have a student who with disabilities with a student with not disabilities traveling to other schools and working on basketball and having, it's called Unified Sports. We had it, I went to the Unified Basketball Game a few weeks ago. It was great seeing those special ed students, and these were with some disabilities, making baskets. And the general ed students praising them. It was really, it was heartwarming, it was awesome. Then you have the parents in the stands clapping. It was, it was just a great, great day. So really inviting them to do, you know, even though it's a little separate, that's an activity that they can do with other folks as well. I love the Best Buddies Program. That is a program where you have mentors with general ed students who work with students with special needs as well. And they do activities together throughout the year. And special ed students really are part of, as far as I'm concerned, field trips, I mean, everything. They should be part of, they should be an extra. So they should be part of the inclusion. Like I said, you shouldn't know in a classroom who's a special ed student, who's not. That is, you know, how I feel. And in an academic context, even though students have special needs, they may have things that we can do to support them in the classroom to help them out. Not only would it just be having a parent or a special ed teacher, what kind of technology can we give them to support them? Assistive technology? How can we modify their tests or accommodate their needs? You know, what can we do to support them in the classroom so that they can access the curriculum? You know, perhaps if we're teaching Algebra I and ninth grade, maybe there's a different book they can use, but still Algebra, so, you know, at their reading level. So really taking the time to support them in those ways. So being cognizant of what the students' needs are and making sure that we're including them in their conversations and having those. I'd love to see students with special needs on student council and those types of things. I know here, we have students with special needs on, you know, just across the board on AP classes and such. So that's really important to me. So I, we wanna make sure the families feel comfortable too and having those same conversations. And what can we do to support them? Again, so reach out to the families. What do you need? How can we support your student? And with the new IEP, a lot of the IEPs are talking about what goals are for each student. The students really have a voice in what they want to happen. So having that information ahead of time can help us plan their futures. And that's one of the new components of the IEP. It used to be at the older level, at the transition level, and now, now it's starting earlier, which is great. We all have goals and they do too. So let's embrace them and see what we can do to support them.
That's great. Does anybody have any follow-ups?
I have a follow-up. I'm not exactly sure how to ask the question, sort of formulate it as I'm thinking out loud. We have a relatively large proportion of our students in Hampton who are on IEPs and 504s. And I just was curious to hear some of your thoughts around any unique challenges that poses or sort of how that gets into the thought process around special education.
We sit around 27%.
27%.
I think it's closer to 30%.
It's closer to 30, yeah.
I think it's closer to 30%. So can you repeat the question?
Just sort of wondering if you have thoughts around, does that change any of the ways you're talking about things? Does that add unique challenges?
No, we need to make sure that we have the funding to support their students because they continue to come in. And we're starting to see them, especially as I said earlier, at the pre-K and the kindergarten level, they're really coming in with a lot of these, some of these social emotional supports that we need to support. So, you know, I think you just need to make sure that we have the funding to support their needs. And some of them may need OT and PT, and staffing becomes an issue too. I mean, we're fortunate that we do have money that sometimes if you spend over 125% of your, of your special ed spending, you can apply for circuit breaker or, I mean, I'm sorry, not circuit breaker, stroke relief. You can apply for that.
We have.
Yeah. So, you know, there are, that is a thing. But I think across the country and across the United States and across the state in Massachusetts, the numbers are increasing. So I think it really comes down to funding and staffing. And you can be as creative as you want, but ultimately, it's coming down to the students' needs and you have to do its best for them. And, you know, and sometimes, some districts feel that I've been feeling the pain because what's gonna happen is because of special needs you're going up, you're starting to have the cut programs that are not special services. And you have to maintain that level. I know we had an issue in Granby about what we put in for our special ed funding. And so when it came time to apply for grant, we had some issues because we didn't, wasn't maintenance of effort with special ed. So we had to make sure that we continued to do that. So really, it comes down to funding, honestly. And I think if you let the folks know that this is happening, that this is what we see, you know, I'm gonna need your support helping us get together and a lot of advocacy. And we need to support advocacy at the state level. You know, talking to our representatives, Dom and Carey and Gomez, and the town administration. And those are the people that are gonna help us. You know, I don't know what the funding's gonna look like and none of us do. You know, we don't know what federal funding's gonna look like in the next few years either. So, you know, locally, we have to really advocate and try to see if we can get more money from the, from somebody.
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna give us money.
It's gotta come eventually.
One would hope, but I don't think the number's gonna go down.
Yeah.
That's not my impression either. Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Great answer. You wanna move on to you? Yeah, we're gonna move on to question five.
Otherwise, I get stuck talking.
I know, we, this is, yeah. We're being very restrained.
Yeah.
I can handle it.
Oh, no, we'll keep you here for hours.
We just don't stop.
Yeah, go back and watch it.
Yeah, that did happen last time.
That happened last time.
The lights went off?
Yeah.
Well, then I'll just keep waving every once in a while. If it's motion detectors, just take your turn waving.
Exactly. See who's under it.
So I'll ask you the next question. Regarding assessment of students and evaluation of staff, what are your preferred tools and methods to gather data for various groups and across grade levels? And please discuss how you would use that data to inform choices around curriculum, programming, staffing, and specifically, how we apply that in a district such as ours?
Sure. Obviously, we all, there's different types of assessments. We have standardized testing, we have, I'll start with group testing and I'll move to the teacher's evaluation. So we have standardized testing, MCAS testing, which is something that we tend to, and we don't know what that's gonna look like in the future for sure. We have no idea how that's gonna look like. But we have other forms of assessment that we can use. Benchmark testing, so I'm familiar with NWEA, which is MAP now, STAR testing, which is Renaissance, IXL, DIBELS, ONCE and PNALE, those are, those are things that I'm familiar with. So taking that, those data points is one data point that we would use to support each student. And then you have, and I'll explain it all, it'll come together. And then, and then you have your formative assessments in your classroom, which are the teacher assessments, exit tickets, you know, what have they been doing to, with dipsticking in the classroom, things like that to support the students. And then you have common formative assessments. If you have grade level assessments, really taking all that information. So first, we have to take all that information together and make charts. I like to make, I like to have a data cycle for each of my students. So when I was in Athol, what we did is we created a data cycle for the teachers. But before we did that, I think, I probably should take a step back. Data's really important. People are afraid of data. They don't know what to do with data. They're really good about pulling it out, but now what's next? So one of the very first things we need to do is really have those conversations. What does it look like? You know, do we have data teams? What does your data team do? You know, how often do you're looking at those data teams? So when I was in Athol, myself and the other curriculum coordinator created a data cycle. And the data cycle was assess the students. Let's take a look at the assessments. What do they need for interventions? Reassess them and just, it's like a cyclical cycle. So we created something and it happened every 10 weeks. Now, you have to really be cognizant of what the community wants. Some people don't like a lot of testing, but it's important that we take a look at that information so that we can make sure our students are meeting our standards that we chose and to make sure that the curriculum is being set. So what we did is we had each grade level put in a chart of their students. So they would put in each assessment, so they would do MCAS test, benchmark testing, you know, and they would put that in there. And then they would look at the data. So every student would have their name, this is where their test results. And how do they fall within that range? Would they be students who excelled in something? So they would be labeled, all those kids, green. And then the students who needed some support would be red. And then the kids that maybe needed a little intervention would be yellow. So then what we did is we took during our wind blocks and took that information, especially at the elementary level, and say, okay, it looks like these students who are in the green level, they're being really, their understanding is content that we're, that we're looking at. So let's give them some enrichment material or let them move on. So in the classrooms, your classrooms should be set up in a way that you're able to support each of those groups of students. Then the yellow group would be, and the students didn't know this, obviously. So, you know, and then, you know, how are you interviewing with that? And then maybe the red, you're maybe need a little bit more intensive work. How do they do that? So you really intentionally do some planning during that time. Sometimes if you had two grade levels and you know that, say, Mr. Smith's classroom is doing really well in this area and Mr. Jones is not doing well in this area, they can switch. And so the teachers can be taught by a different teacher during those wind blocks so that they can get the content by that other person. Which, you know, leads to say, is another person needs some support as an educator because their students aren't being successful? Or is it just different ways? So data does really a lot of things. It helps you take a look at the curriculum. Is there a hole somewhere in the curriculum that we haven't been doing well? What have we seen over the last couple of years? Well, we're not doing too well in numeracy. Or our students need some little phonemic awareness. You know, what can we do to support that? Is that some curriculum work we need to do? Let's get a team together and talk about what that looks like. So really taking a look at that. And, and, or is it the instructional practices? As I said, Mr. Smith is doing a really good job with that. Mr. Jones, not so much. So maybe we need to have Mr. Jones go to Mr. Smith's classroom, see how he's teaching that. So really taking over the instructional practices as well. And then giving that teacher some additional supports. So really taking a look at that as far as instruction and curriculum. And one of the other ways to do it is, you know, how can, if those students are consistently doing poorly, maybe that student needs some student assistance, maybe a referral and things like that. So what can we do to support the students in having that? So having that data is important, but we really need to show teachers how to use the data. And once they get taught how to use the data, how are they going to translate that to the classroom? Because you also need to move forward in the curriculum. You can't keep going on the same things over and over again. So how do you intertwine that phonemic awareness into the next lesson? You know, what can you do next time? So that you're moving forward. So you can't keep staying the same thing, you know, leave the red badge of courage for, you know, from September to January. You can't do that. So you have to, I just, I don't know why I said that. Whatever. You walk into a classroom and you might say, I saw that Romeo and Juliet, you know, in August. Why is it still there in March? So, you know, let's take a look at that stuff. So you, because they're not getting it. Well, that's not, that's not acceptable. So, you know, those are things we have to do. So, you know, those are the tools I use. Formative assessments, summative assessment, standardized testing. Those are all things that I use as a, as an administrator. And, you know, programming, again, that could be, we're seeing a lot of students in the red. So do I need to hire another interventionist to help the students? And that would be programming. Or do I need to open a different classroom to help support those students? So that would be part of the programming and staffing for that. As far as staffing, I really like to take a look at, in the beginning of the year, I would meet with the admin team. Let's take a look at what our strategic plan looks like. What is going to be our focus areas this year? So when we're looking at our focus areas, we should be looking at all those data points that we got last year from the students. You know, okay, it looks like we're falling a little short here. So it looks like maybe we need some support and instruction. So when we look in the classroom, let's have some PD with the administration in September, in July and August. Let's take a look at some sample lessons and let's take a look at some online work and some work. So let's, let's look at what a classroom should look like. And then after that, we take, we create a tool for ourselves. So when we walk into the classrooms, we say, okay, we're going to be looking for these specific things. You know, and then we talk to the teachers when they come back to school. When we go into classrooms this year, these are some things we'd like you to focus on. Really have those conversations. So when the year starts, everybody knows this is what we're looking for in the classroom. We're going to be coming and looking at these things and we're going to keep, continue to support you in these initiatives. So those are the things I look like, look at in the classroom. So it's observation tools and I do authors with the principals. So that will be the few, it might be the leadership team. It might be just myself and the principal. It might be myself and the special ed director. You know, what, what does that look like in the classroom? So really having those conversations. Using Teach Point is really important because you can have the teachers put their own information in there. So they can show you their lesson. This isn't what I'm doing, but it didn't quite translate into the classroom like that. So having those data points. And, you know, talking to families. You know, if, if you're getting some feedback from families, gee, this teacher's doing a great job. You know, let me get in there and see what's happening. You know, those types of things. So those are ways that I would definitely support families and students. So in the end, I think looking at the data and training staff how to use data and then training your administrative team in what we're looking for and moving forward, trying to support the families and students and making sure that the classroom is vibrant, engaging, equitable, having all those little places.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a follow-up. First a comment. That might be the most accessible explanation of how to employ data in the administration of public education I've ever heard. So bravo. That I think anybody who watches this will be able to understand. This is a nerd question meant for nerds. And you broke it down so that a parent watching from home can understand why and how we gather data and how we use it to help their students. So bravo.
See, I just want to piggyback on that. That's exactly my thought. Because I'm always the person over here. Because I am probably the least involved on a day-to-day basis in the education of most of these other members of this. And you just, they need to understand data like that.
Well, the reason it is because I feared data for a really, really, really long time. So I think I had to, how, if I'm fearing, other people fear me. So, you know, I think I know my shortcomings more. And it was data for a really long time.
Yeah. And I think that's a common issue.
For sure.
So my follow-up, where you really piqued my curiosity. I'd like you to dig a little more, if you don't mind, just for a minute or so. You mentioned wind blocks. You mentioned wind blocks. And that is something we're kind of struggling with and exploring further, particularly in those middle level grades. And you referenced, I thought it was really great. I think we're doing some of this already, you know, accessing those for this kind of really targeted. So can you just talk for a second about what, what's the frequency of using the wind block for that kind of targeted support? And then when not using it for that, how else can you use it? You know, if it is something like arts or enrichment or something that is maybe activating or supporting students in another way? Can you just talk to me for a second about wind block? Because I don't know where else to plug this.
It really, it really depends on what you're looking for, for support. I mean, sometimes you may not need, everyone may be doing great in one particular area. So you may not need, there's certain trimesters or semesters that that may need to engage the frequency. You don't all use it too much if you're going to take a special away from the student because then the students are going to be resentful and you want to make sure you don't have that. But you could also use wind block for, you know, other things as for SEL. So really taking time to support the students in their socio-emotional learning. So I think it depends on, on the grade level and what you're looking to support. You might need more wind blocks at, at the higher level than you do at the elementary, at, you know, at grades five and six. And then next month you might need grades one and two. I mean, every 10 weeks you should be doing these data, these data benchmark testings. And they, they're very quick. They're not, they shouldn't take more than 20 minutes. You don't want to make the day, you know, exhausting. And the data should be fairly quickly. So you should be able to have within the next two or three days, okay, what do I need to do now? So you could have wind blocks, you know, twice a week, depending on what you're looking for. So it really varies. But you'd have to have your team, you know, your team of teachers make that decision on their own. Okay, looks like we just need a little bit of support here. So maybe a two-day. And then the other days you can do some socio-emotional learning curriculum or, you know, bring in a, you know, whatever you need to do. So it really varies on what the content is. Some content areas are a little bit more tricky, you know, and some are not. They don't have wind blocks at the high schools. So you have to kind of weave that in a different way. At the elementary school, it's different. At the high schools, it's much different because they don't have that time. So the high schools, they're going to have to take some time in the next day to perhaps do something like that. We're going to get the intervention to the, you know, at the middle and high school because their schedules are a little bit different. And at the middle school especially. So it's really about trying to weave the time into the day if you have to. You might, you know, maybe we won't do a social studies four days a week, one week. And, 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 you know, social studies and science always tend to take a backseat in the elementary. But it's something that we definitely need to work on.
Yeah. I mean, I could talk about these things. All right. Question six, Ben?
Hello.
Hi. Who'd name this person?
We're good people.
I don't know. I don't know. She's my middle child. What's that tell you?
All right. So this is a question around technology. Discuss your views on the successful integration of technology into teaching and learning across grade levels. How do you balance the clear need for digital literacy while still maintaining a focus on improving critical thinking and encouragement of creative self-expression? What are the greatest benefits of and areas of concern around technology as it impacts education?
I'm probably going to say something a little controversial, but
Ooh, love it.
During the pandemic, we were all thrown into this technology abyss that we were not aware of. So unfortunately, it gave us a catalyst to get a Romeo today. So, you know, it certainly, you know, it was bad, but it helped us get where we needed to be with technology. And I think we're still not there yet. So technology, to me, is a way to help the teachers augment what they're doing. And that's a perfect example of when we would talk about supporting the students and perhaps in the classroom. So when you're using technology, you still should have that face-to-face conversation. And the students that need extra support maybe would take that time to use that technology in the classroom to get some IXL. You know, they would target their instruction. So that would really be good for some independent work. So taking the time to use that for, to students to get extra help, to students who get enrichment and to, and to access things they couldn't ordinarily access. For example, students have access to libraries they wouldn't be, have access to, have access to other people they didn't have access to. So a lot of times you can zoom with other schools. And really learning about other cultures is really important to me. So having that information is important in technology. Technology helps students with special needs because they have different ways to learn. And sometimes they need those, that technology to help them in the classroom. So to me, technology really is to support the students. It should not become a crutch. The teachers shouldn't be using technology all the time. I do know that people are concerned with the amount of screen time that students are on technology, especially if they go home and get back on their phones and their iPads and whatever they're using. So we have to be cognizant of that. Which makes me come up to, I think we need to start some digital literacy at the elementary school. Digital literacy at the elementary school? I don't say, I don't say that very well. Digital literacy.
It's just going to get worse.
I just can't do it. So right now in Granby, we hired a person who is our, I'm going to just say, media specialist. And she, she focuses on that. And we are talking about the students, what does your digital footprint look like? Really trying to teach them digital citizenship. So we're taking time to work at that at the elementary school and hopefully give them the tools they need to support them in the future. I think people think whatever they read on the internet is credible. So really showing them what credible sources are, really teaching them that. Because we need to educate people how to use technology. So it's not all about using the laptops. It's about really what the information you're getting and how can you, how can you source it and what you're looking for. So some of that is really important. And that holds true, you know, for anybody who's doing a research project or, you know, or you're doing a science project, whatever it may be. You know, you can have interactive labs. A lot of science places are, because sometimes some of the tools might be a little bit dangerous, but something that may not be appropriate for school. They can do these virtual labs. Those are really important with a lot of, some of, some of the upper level classes. If you're taking AP classes, you may not really want to get in there. You can do some of the virtual work. So that is a way for people to support things that they won't have normal access to. So that's what I like about technology. So it's going to be something that we have to try to incorporate in our lessons. And I like to use stations when it comes down to technology. I like to see the teachers doing their lesson, having, you know, having their face-to-face lesson with the students and then putting the students in stations. One group of students may be collaborating on the conversation that the teacher has. Another group might be doing independent work on the computer. And the other ones might be getting some supports from the teacher. And that's another way that you can do the supports that the students need from other programs and other data that you received before. Having those tools is really important for the teachers. So again, a lot of PD has to take in place for the teachers to understand how to do that in the classroom. It's about letting the students do, the teacher should be facilitating the learning, not, not, you know, standing doing this all day long. Because kids need to get their hands into the mud. They need to grapple with the, with the content. And you have to find ways to do that. And the last thing we want to do is have students be bored in the classroom. So we have to find ways to support them. And technology is a great way to do that. Technology is expensive. So I do know that some of our Chromebooks are nearing the end of their life. So that's something we have to consider when we do our capital improvements. You know, what is that going to look like? How are we going to support that? Because it's not going away. What are we going to do to make sure that the kids continue to use this technology in the classroom? And technology is more than, as I said, more than laptops. It's, I'm trying to think of something else, but it is more than tech, it is more than laptops. You know, it's about, you know, how can we use robotics? Those types of programs and, you know, and those types of things. So, was there a discussion, thinking? And I think the greatest bit, I think people are worried about screen time, basically. You know, what does that look like in the classroom? And how could, how can we teach students that what they're doing on the internet may not necessarily be safe? Safety, security is really important. And how do we support them to make sure that they're not giving out personal information and what is credible? So those are, digital literacy is really important to me and we have to be able to support them moving forward in that.
Thank you.
Follow-up, questions?
I have a follow-up. Can you talk a little bit about, we've just been hearing a lot about AI in the news in regards to schools and just kind of what your thoughts are about how AI technology is going to work its way in?
Terrifies me. Absolutely terrifies me. But I think it's, I think it's actually a valuable tool. I think if we can show students how to use AI, I think it might be a tool. We have to train teachers how to use it right now. One of the, AI is very beneficial because I used this example in my last interview. When I went to an AI conference, one of the things, we have a lot of students who may not like to write and, or especially who may have special needs or may not have the thought process they're looking for. So I like, there's programs that you can use for AI where a student could write down, you know, I need you to write two sentences about, about, uh, what, what does it look like at the beach? So a student say, you know, uh, the beach, the water's red, uh, the water's red, the water's blue. And, and I see the sand. So what happens is the AI will now project a picture for the student. So the picture can, the student can see the picture and say, well, that's not what I want it to look like. So then the student go back, have, add more information to it. Okay, I see the, I see the, the blue water with, uh, the white, um, foamy waves. And then, uh, at the beach, I see beach towels and, and umbrellas. So then they can put the picture up. So this can help a student develop a paragraph. But it's just things that we have to get them to learn. And we have to learn them ourselves. I know as far as, you know, I've been to a couple of conferences and they're really talking about what kind of procedures and policies, not policy, but procedures you want to put in your handbook to support that. There's been some litigation, especially in Hingham. What does that look like? Because there's been nothing. So it's something we definitely have to work at as a district. What are we willing to put in there? And how are we going to support the students, um, in, in this? And, you know, plagiarism is, is a thing. And one of the things they talked about, when you do ask a student to write something and they generate a picture, is that plagiarism because they can draw the picture? So there really is a lot of, um, a lot of minutia in there trying to figure out how are we going to, um, work AI? So it is, I think, as cell phones, they terrified us for a long time. Now, we can't live without them. We'll get there. We'll get there. I don't know what it looks like, but we're going to get there.
Robot teachers.
No, never robot teachers. Never, never, never.
Not for a joke.
Yeah, robots can't be empathetic and they, nope, nope. We need, we need our staff.
I got one more one. Just, you mentioned like digital literacy at the elementary school level, which is something that I think is going to be crucial going forward. What might that look like? Like, I'm curious, and I'm sort of thinking of this question as, as I say it, but, um, what does that look like on a day that's already pretty packed with, uh, you know, classes and curriculum?
It is, it is a special for the students. It is a special. Students have that as library. So their library would be, um, digital media. So they have some library time and then they would have, that would be a special for them. That's what they do with the elementary school. And at the high school, it's a little different. It's something that has to be embedded with your department heads and, you know, the history department, the English department, you know, and, and your science department to a certain extent. You'd have to really work with them individually. But at the, um, elementary, it is one of their specials. And I, I think that's the best way to go. And I think they can also talk about it in their, you know, writing classes as well when they're in there. But I think it definitely should be, um, a special for the library.
Good, thanks.
One second?
Yep.
All right, we move on to the final.
All right.
This one's, I don't know, arguably the most depressing of the bunch, the star of our money.
I'm okay with this question. I'm okay with this question.
Uh, describe your experience in developing and managing a comprehensive school district budget. Include considerations for both recurring and capital expenses. In a district such as ours, which has maintained level services in recent years, but has a keen appetite for the expansion of programming, discuss how you might access funding for that, what that potential timeline might look like.
I have, um, done budgets in at least three different districts. So I have a pretty, um, intimate knowledge of how to create a budget. Um, I've done some, um, budgets starting at zero and I've done budgets, um, that start, you know, where we started off before. Um, budgeting starts, believe it or not, in October. So your budget system starts in October because, uh, you have to start moving into your budget season with the towns in January, December. So really having those conversations with them early on. So you need to look at your recurring expenses. So some of the top, the vast majority of your budget goes to, um, staffing and benefits. That is about 85% of your budget. Sometimes it's 90%, although it's probably 85% because special is now taking a big portion of a lot of people's budgets at this point. So it's definitely moved up. So you have to, you know, look at those resources. So that really gives you 10 to 15% to use for facilities, maintenance, um, um, you know, curriculum, all other types of things. So you really have to be cognizant when you're doing this. So your recurring expenses aren't going to change. You have to embed, um, what the, um, cola wages are or step and lane changes for staffing. And you have to, you know, keep that in mind. So those are fixed budgets. The other things you have to worry about really, again, we increased costs of special and what is that going to look like? So a lot of it is projections. What is our oil going to look like next year? What is our gas going to look like? You know, what is our electricity going to look like? So those are the projections. You know, everything is going up, so we don't know what that's going to look like. You know, how much is wax for the floor going to cost? So a lot of this stuff is projection. So you really have to do your best guess. So one of the ways I start the budget is, you know, even though I have all that, I usually, then I meet with that other 15% that I have. I meet with, um, my principals. And I say, principals, I need you to go back, talk to your department heads, discuss what you need, what are your must-haves? What are your wants? And what are your dreams? So we really start that process early. And when they put that thing, when they do that in place, they need to put justification, why do we need these things? Because ultimately, if, if they want something, I have people to justify why I'm asking for this money. So, um, so as a team, they come together and say, probably January, then we come together and everybody bring their budget with us. Okay, so it looks like we, we're going to, we're going to need a teacher at the high school next year to support one of our behavior programs. So let's look at the, do you really need that teacher at the elementary school? Or do you really need that program at the elementary school? We might have to do a little bit of negotiating with each other. And that's kind of how that works, you know. Do you help me out with, I, I probably don't use many materials for, um, you know, the, the, I'm going to use the wonders. I don't know if you, I don't think you use wonders, but I couldn't think of, uh, CK, CKL I could use. Um, I don't need as much money for that. So perhaps I can give you a little bit here. So it's a lot of give and take between, between, uh, doing that. And then you put that together and you meet with the budget subcommittee. So that's just a basic way to, to move with the budget, meet with the town. And, you know, what do your projections look like? What do you think I can relative, what can I, what can I afford? What, what, what do you see the tax revenue look like next year? What, what can I put in for my percentage? You know, are my salaries going to be 3% already? You know, what does that look like? So how much can you give me? And what do we have? So having that conversation early. Um, and then you do something separately, you do capital. So, you know, like right now, we put in for, uh, you know, some capital for ours. We put in something for a new boiler. So, you know, what does that look like? What's the timeline look for that? Well, we don't need a new boiler right now. We're going to need one in three years. So, you know, we're going to put that ahead. So, you know, year one, we're going to plan for it. Year two, maybe we're going to start looking around a little bit. And year three, we might have to implement it. So those are some of the things that we're going to do to, to get our new boiler. And some grooming tool we need this year for our, for our, um, fields. And that's something we're looking for as well. So really looking at capital expenditures. And that's when you meet with the town again. Looks like we're going to need, we're going to need a new, um, carpet up in, uh, up in the library next year. Because, you know, it's ripping up and, uh, it's not safe. You know, what can we do to support that? So we're having those, um, things ahead of time. What building maintenance do you need? I've been involved in many, many building projects, um, as far as accelerated, um, projects with windows and doors. I've been roofing. Um, I've been in actually building a new elementary school in Mayor. We started that. They're actually building it now, four years later. But, you know, I've been involved in all of that. Um, so you really need to, first of all, plan your budget. Now what, then you also need to be a visionary. What, what are we looking for for the future? You're talking about growing programs now. In having conversation with the elementary staff, they really would like to grow the preschool program.